Republic for Bishop Sanders, my nation under God. In this home with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Nice to see a full room again. Welcome.
Just for the heat?
Yeah.
I'm too worried about that.
Last week it was cold.
I know, isn't it crazy?
Okay, call meeting order. At the eight forty-five, Paul. And Nick Armstrong. Will postpone that. You already cleared off, they postponed on that. They postponed, so we'll scratch that one.
I'll make the motion to accept with that off table. Are you on the term?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes, so January eighth, I'm gonna read the minutes, they must find motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor? All period. Public concerns. General public.
That'd be us.
That'd be you.
That'd be us, okay. Just gonna keep it short, but. We're just giving an update, trying to get done what we can get done, but. Basically, on twenty-fifth of September. You guys asked us for three things, public support, shore plan. And meet with the conservation board, work out details. That's it. Number one, we have twelve hundred members that support the dam and keeping Lake Nicole's. We have, number two would be for the shore plan. We have river development, four-point plan. We have have option four, which I do not believe you guys have ever seen. And then we also have the action report. So we have plans all over the place for what we want and needs to be done. Uh, number three. Meet with and work with the conservation board. We tried. They called us one time wanting to talk. He said, let's work something out in the future. Last week, I called them. They says, no, we're not gonna meet with you. Either you buy it or it goes. Hard to work like that. I have a timeline of everything that's been going on here since back in October. I can go through that if you want, but basically. When it's all done. I read the Ellers and Cooney community report, opinion. There's a paragraph said that it don't even have anything to do with our dams, I have. They're talking about high-hazard dams, ours is a low-hazard. It's not even the same animal. And, and low-hazard dam is no, no threat to life and property, but that's what they hinged their opinion. Was high hazard. So it means nothing to me. But, all in all. I just, I was sitting here last night working on it, I said, this has gotten out of hand. We all agree on that, it's been too long, everything's gone. But what it boils down to is it's not about ownership, it's not about safety. And it's not about recreation, cooperation, anything like that. It really is about the maintenance of the dam, period. In a nutshell, they don't wanna do it, we do. That no tax that extends. I mean, it's there.
Well, how much money do you have raised? I mean, it's all about, I mean, let's face it, I mean, it's gonna cost a lot of money to get that dam up and going. If that's really what you wanna do, so how much money do you have raised?
We're not officially raising money yet because we don't know whether or not we should.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna go take five thousand dollars from you if I can't spend it on that dam. And we don't have the permission to do it. So we do have some money saved, but we're not actually fundraising yet because we don't know if we. Can spend that money on again.
Cause it's a hard sale. We're still up in the air. And as far as that elder.
You can buy it.
That elders. Yeah, then you can't get any funding.
No, 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 no. We're, we're limited on, on all.
Well, all you have to do is have your liability and all that good stuff, and you guys can buy it.
Sandy, that Ellers and Cooney thing, all they were asked to do was check the liability. And they went through the whole sixty-seven hundred dollars worth of. What we're gonna do with the dam, that was nothing to do with what they were asked to do. All they were asked to do was to see if the liability was okay for us to go and do it. You guys just spent sixty-seven hundred dollars, could've went to the dam, or probably should come out of their funds, really. Because they, all they were instructed to do was find out the liability, not six pages of. Baloney.
That wasn't baloney, but that's okay.
That's his opinion.
Yeah, it is, and that's what it is, it's called legal opinion, and that's what we asked them to go get, was a legal opinion.
But why did they deal with the high hazards, I, it's not even us. No threat to life or property. DNR designates that, not, not us.
I realize that, I realize that, but also you've gotta get all the. Permits and things like that at all.
We, we talked, half the stuff doesn't even particularly.
But we can't do the gates and things like that until we fix up the dam, from what I understand. And the D, the DNR said that, that the DNR said that you have to fix the dam before the gates go.
The DNR has also told us, we don't have to because it's dead when it's.
I don't think so.
We were all on that meeting, and the DNR said, we were all on that meeting together, the DNR said. The dam had to be fixed before they would put, allow, put a permit to fix, or to change the gates, or do the gates, or however that, I'm not for sure the wording on that.
And we were told this, we were told we could fix the gates, put the boards in.
I've got an email from, from the safety guy at the DNR. We can repair the gates and put cable out and put splashboards on without any permits. We don't have to do any other work, we can just do that to reestablish that pool. Without permits.
Never seen that.
This is Katie Welby, the guy that was on the Zoom meeting.
It's the main, that's, uh, but. That's the stipulation, it's not replacement, it's the maintenance.
Repair, maintenance.
Negligence by the Humble Conservation Board.
They're not being negligent, I think you guys are throwing things out there and, yeah.
Then they'll, these are the lawyers, they're supposed to take care of the data, take care of all the public. Our safety, okay? They have been negligent.
Well, I don't think.
It isn't them, it's us. Well, it does, it goes back to us, too. We have to have, well, they, they. That's the reason they said what they said at several meetings. Give us the timeline. That they came to us and we, well, us was previous groups.
Well, it's gonna be really hard to get past, you speak of the DNR and all that, this is a lot of innuendo and conjecture. But the part, the hard fact that's out there, and you can certainly take the time and research is. That they understand from the engineering reports, that dam is exceedingly deficient. And it needs to be structurally repaired, like Sandy said, before you can move forward and make any major improvements. So.
Before you can make any major improvements, but you can do the maintenance and it means that.
Whether that's true.
It's no different from a car.
Whether that's, whether that's true or not.
The engine because you have old tires.
Whether that's true or not, it doesn't, uh, take away the fact that. There's scientific reports out there that the dam needs to be repaired. The county is held liable for that, uh, place. That, that's not gonna go away. And that's why this whole thing has come up, that's been known for some time.
That was based on one report.
There's several, and I'm not gonna argue the science, and we've, we've seen all this previously. I don't think you're gonna get past that fact, and the rough estimate on repair of structure is somewhere north of five million dollars.
Quickly fix the gate for it.
There is, we're not talking gates, we're not talking cables, we're not talking plants, because that does not address the underlying issue of why this all came up.
We're doing it for no money.
It does, that's, like I said, I won't argue that, but the fact that jumping over the. Humongous elephant that lives in the river, if nothing else, that this dam cannot be maintained. Without it being repaired, and that is exceedingly expensive.
We're gonna repair it, and then we will look at upgrading and getting all the other major things fixed.
You have to start somewhere.
Why can't we, it's a, it's a gift, it's a Christmas present, no cost to you. The unfortunate thing of it is, it, all that sounds great, and, and I appreciate everybody's passion and concern with this. But it doesn't override or supersede the fact that it's structurally deficient, and the DNR reports and the engineering reports state that.
And we're gonna fix that.
You, you aren't gonna be able to, unless somebody. Comes up with five to eight million dollars to repair it. I don't see it happening.
That's why we're trying to stay with the government, and so we qualify for the grant stuff that we can get.
There is no chance.
That's the problem we're finding, there is no grants, odds are to maintain the dam at its current state.
Today, they're gonna come up with.
There isn't, there isn't.
But give us a chance.
You have the chance.
What do you mean you have a chance?
No, it's not.
What, what have they done, what have they had a chance to do? They, they're trying to run the damn thing, and, and we, we won't even let them on it.
What, what's the, we get a liability policy, it's no cost to you guys. What happened? Discount that legal report from Ellers and Cooney, but that does state that, and it's, we have to look after the county as a whole. Uh, the liability issue and things like that.
We have them for twenty-five years, we haven't worried about it for twenty-five years. Don't, don't go there, Sandy, because we haven't done it.
Well, you know, you don't wanna go there, okay, I don't wanna go there either, because you know.
We don't have the ability to say that we've taken care of it.
Supervisors now than what there was twenty-five, thirty-five, or fifty years ago.
Show us, show us what they've done in the last twenty-five years. Or the conservation board.
That's, the supervisors, no, they have not designated any money to fix that, I, I agree. But, moving forward, we had an excellent option, that was option two, that was brought in, recreation, and. It's proven up at Charles City, it's proven at Manchester.
Charles City's a dead horse, call Brett. I know you won't talk to him either, but call Brett.
Well, Brett's never talked to me or called me, so let's.
All right, but one thing on liability is, they're worried about the liability, but you have volunteers putting up. The Taj Mahal out to Sheldon Park, where's their liability laying? Can anybody answer that?
Who's the volunteer?
I don't know, they said they wanted volunteer to ask us.
That's, uh, apples to oranges.
Great addition to the Sheldon Park, so don't make something, like some statement, it's gonna be a great addition to the Sheldon.
Really, you already had Isaac Walnut, you got rid of that, what's, what do you wanna do with this place? Never mind, we're getting off subject.
It is off the subject, so.
We beat a dead horse, but I don't know if you guys wanna go there.
Take your list into the auditor's office, make copies, so we can all have a copy of your list. Oh, okay.
That was just, we, we gave you a basic list that I left back in September, it was October. It was just a four-point plan. We expanded on it, you said that wasn't enough, we expanded on it. We keep getting asked to do things. We keep doing them. And we come, we're just up against a wall.
Yeah.
You want it out, you want it out, I don't understand. It doesn't have to come out, okay?
Well, thanks for presenting this to us, we'll read through it.
Thanks for keep trying.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you for the update.
What the two guys?
What the two guys? Two guys.
Give in the names.
All right. Right now, they don't have.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public concern? It's not, moving on, Julie.
Well, thank you for having us today.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I'm Julie Larson, I'm the director in Humboldt. We have this fun little factual handout for you, but really, it's a, yeah, it's a brag sheet, sorry. I need longer arm, it's a brag sheet for, um, our library. And all of the county library. We thank you last year for the increase that you gave us for this fiscal year. Very generous and very appreciated. And so this year, we just asked for a five percent increase to help us. Cover our costs and expensive building maintenance, technology. Buying materials. And keeping our buildings, our buildings up and going, and all of our staffing, but we have some. Incredible things that are happening, as you're probably all aware, we all have a summer reading program. That focuses mostly on the children, but this year, Humboldt added an adult program. So we were servicing children from birth. All the way up to adults, and in fact, if you are an expectant mother, you can even come in and sign up for the summer reading program. And we would love to give those folks a book at the end of the program, and the girls had. Something every day, pretty much in June, an activity, um, whether it was based for the smaller kids. Or in the middle age, the teenagers, and even the adults. And then our program, it just continues throughout the year, um, we have school visits that come. I know Renwick is doing Storytime. And Gilmore City has done some really cool things in the fall. With pumpkin decorating, and they're really involved in community activities downtown, just as much as what we have been, we did. Some farmer's market activities this summer with, um, Storytime and crafting, um, and that was very enjoyable. And we did the downtown summer kickoff with the businesses, where we had. Life-size twister in the yard, until it became apparent that the grass was all dried up, and the kids were all complaining that their hands hurt. They're touching the crispy grass, so we had to run back to the building and get the actual mat. But it was really fun to see the big kids interacting with the little ones, and then they got into spinning the little game, so it was just a great present. To be part of the community, um, we do coffee and music on Mondays, and we have patrons that come in and read the paper every day. We have a lot of people that do that, and I'm sure you do as, as well, and so they look forward to that. And this year, we're adding a seed library, starting this spring. Something I've been very passionate about is.
Is that just?
Actual seed.
Seeds.
Yeah, yeah, but that doesn't mean that it's limited to just people within, so anybody in the county can come in and utilize that. And so I reached out to gardening companies, and a lot of them have donated seeds to us. And then we were part of a grant program the city took part of, so we'll be getting part of that money. In the future, for programming purposes and for purchasing seeds, so it just gives people an opportunity. To try something new, or get out there and do a small home garden.
It's awesome.
For those people who can, you know, they are proud of the seeds are. I'm an avid gardener, and it's.
Did you ever think about asking for donations? I mean, uh, I bet there's people out there that have bought seeds that didn't.
Yeah, and that.
They could bring in a few packets of.
And that'll be another avenue that will. Yeah, just that is, don't want the seed packets to be ten years old.
Right, they might have.
Right, even though they, you know, depending on the source of the company that you get them from, they're, they're viable for, as long as you store them properly. They're viable for quite some time, but we have the school kids that come over once a month. Last week was a little unpredictable because of the weather, but we average thirty-five to thirty-eight class visits. A month. Yeah, so it's preschool, all the way up through the fourth graders. That come, Saint Mary's, um, they walk over, the smaller children do. Kindergarten and first grade, fourth grade comes over as well, and then Ashley goes there for preschool, so. We are quite busy, and I don't know what you wanna add, or what you do?
I mean, I'm, I'm new, I just started at the Renwick Library, so I'm just getting things back. Um, she wasn't doing programs and things like that, so I'm just starting up Storytime and programs during the summer. So.
I'm Gilmore City, and, um. Our big thing for summer reading, we did one big blast, and we did the Grout Museum last year. And it brought in from Pocahontas County, um, Humboldt County, of course, uh, I think there was some from Fort Dodge that came. It was, it was very good, and all nine of the libraries had the Grout Museum on a different, so, and that was our big thing last year, uh, summer reading. We do daycare on a weekly basis, and, um, in the last few months, the daycare then comes in the afternoon for crafts, so our Wednesdays are really. Cause then we have movie and snacks with the kids that afternoon, too. And whoever wants to come, comes, crafts. We do a craft day on Saturdays, um, we get adults in for that, too. So, we're very active, um, we have programs Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays and Mondays, it just depends. Our after-school program that was supposed to happen today got postponed till next, because of the cold. So, very active in the community, and we appreciate help.
All right, that is awesome, I, I mean, I see in Livermore, that's where I'm closest to. They, they would echo the same thoughts, these, you know, obviously, you know, even Humboldt's not a huge town by standards. But in all of our small towns, and the rest of them are, libraries are really important function in these communities, I see it. You know, when I go in there, and I do like to check out an occasional book, and, uh. It, it, you see all the things that you guys are talking about. So.
Back around for more.
Could you, uh, mute if you're not gonna speak, please? One other thing for last summer, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, no, I just say, I, I really, good luck getting Renwick up there.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah, I've added more hours, she was only open ten, and I'm open twenty, and so we've been getting a lot busier since I started.
We had a local couple come in last summer for summer reading, too. Um, Bruce Torson, he did art in front of the kids. And Mary, his wife, um, played music and sang to him, and the daycare actually said, we have to do this again. I mean, you know, if you have some of your local people in on the program, it helps a lot financially, but. You know, you still wanna appreciate what you have in your time, those two are very creative.
Oh, they shut them down.
They're very important part of our.
And I would speak for our staff, and I'm sure. Warren can as well, you know, our staff is extremely passionate about their jobs, they're very, very dedicated. Every one of them.
I see that.
And they all have, they all bring. Other staff that are really good in technology. Faster than I am at problem solving, they can do it, but they can jump in and troubleshoot your phones way better. Than I can, and we really do a lot of that for people, they lock up their phones, they don't know how to unlock them, you know, basically, it's. I, I, we have a gentleman who seems to put his phone on airplane mode, and he doesn't know how to get out of it. And then he, and then he stops in, but we do a lot of printing. I believe you guys do, too.
Faxmas, faxes and.
Lot of scanning.
But you guys have gone digital, too, you've got a lot of digital books and things like.
Yes, oh yeah, we do, yeah, our digital checkouts are just soaring, in fact, if you look at our digital Artby magazines, we're over a hundred every month. For checkouts, on those, but we still have the physical ones as well, and I'm pleased with. The amount of magazines that go out every month, and then the people that are coming in just to read them. Great. And also that Iowa shares. Yes, um, Iowa shares, my library, I know some libraries only get it once, but it's where the state library. Have drivers come pick up and deliver books to us on a weekly basis from other libraries. We have book club, we need about books. We go to, order them, and then they deliver them to us. And it's a free service to patrons and to us.
Okay, great. The, um, the Zoom, uh, there's a contact on it that says A N N O N, could you please mute? Your Zoom, cause it, everything you're saying is coming across our meeting. Do you know how to do mute?
So do you all have computers that people come in and use?
Yes, we do.
How busy are you with those?
Not as busy as we used to be, but then with that being said, we.
We still have people that come in, I have two in particular every day, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, that's there every day. Mail and doing whatever it is that they do, and, um. We have another gentleman, he's in two or three times a week. Doing that, we have a lot of people who bring in their own devices, and then plug in, and they're, whether they're working remotely or passing through the area. Um, so we have two different stations where they can sit and plug in, and sit in a comfortable chair, and work that way. As well, but then our computers are updated monthly. For virus protection, all the, all of the updates. That they need and replaced every two to three years, so that they stay current. And, yeah, good question, great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work at all.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome.
Um, I love my job, it's a great one, and everybody's happy when they come in, so.
You could probably leave some of the, Chris, we still have that. You don't have to leave someone put in there, so if someone's looking for their library.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you, thanks for your time today.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah.
I, I froze last week, so I, I dressed warm.
I guess not.
That's a very nice sweater, too.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appropriate, except that he's a little sketchy in the regulation here.
What's that?
I can't, you can't see it.
I can, but I didn't know what.
I thought they had to at least say who they were.
Okay, moving on, we're a few minutes early, but Ben, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I've got two items on the agenda for today.
A bunch of tired guys.
And a bunch of tired guys, yeah.
Well, they did a wonderful job.
Oh, relayed the message, yeah, they all looked a little wiped today, so.
I bet.
We ran, uh, we ran blacktops Friday, Saturday. Pulled off about noon or a little after on Saturday, when. Found out that we're not making any headway, uh, roads were drifting back shut within fifteen, twenty minutes, so. Uh, we pulled off as it started snowing, invisibility got worse. Uh, yesterday, we ran all of our blacktops first thing in the morning, and all of our blade operators jumped on the gravel and ran their entire route. They punched everything one direction, today, their plan is to try and open everything up, get it open two lanes. There are a few problematic spots, so we'll probably have the old Osh Gosh out.
Awesome.
Yeah, running, running the old snow blower, so.
Good luck with that.
But the two items that I got on the agenda, uh, the first is an application to work in the county right away. Uh, this work actually got completed last Wednesday, it was an emergency repair. To get the phone lines back up and active in Bradgate. Uh, there were ten customers that were without service. And, uh, uh, it was to repair vandalism. Well, it was, uh. A pedestal that was next to a, a farm field, and what we think happened is they caught it with their disc or their ripper. I mean, it wasn't vandalism, but that's how they called it.
Yeah.
But then, anyway, they had to get in and, uh, dig a pit and dig back far enough that they could splice in, and while they were here, they filled in the hole.
I see them out there.
Place, so.
So it just showed up, even though it'd probably been done this fall?
It probably was done this fall, and, uh. Just got reported and finally got to the right people.
So everything's done on that? So everything's done on that, we just need, we just need to approve it retroactively.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a quote to purchase our. Renewal for uh, AutoCAD Civil Three D, that is our design software that we use. For our planned production, uh, they presented us with two options. Uh, the one year agreement is twenty three hundred ninety one dollars and ninety cents. Three year is a little over seven thousand dollars, if you work the math out, it's. Two, three times the one year price. And from everything that I've looked at over the last couple of years, it goes up about six percent a year.
Better off do the three year.
This gets you all the automatic updates.
This gets us all the updates and, and everything else, this is uh, one license. So we've got. Uh, my computer is the one that's licensed on a regular basis, Dave's has uh. Twenty twenty software on it, so when we upgrade his computer next year, we'll end up having to put. We'll have to buy another license for his computer. They used to sell uh, multi-user licenses, but I'm told that they're phasing that out now.
What was it, seven?
Seven thousand one hundred and seventy five dollars and seventy cents.
You don't wanna just move another chair into your office.
Right. Take turns.
Yeah, and that's a three year, right?
That's a three year agreement.
Well, you want, you have this all the time.
Yes.
What was it previously, one or three year?
Uh, it was a one year agreement for twenty two hundred and sixty dollars last year, so it went up a hundred and thirty dollars.
Kind of is a, it's a little less and it kinda locks in.
Well, it locks in that price for three years.
It probably won't go down. No, it won't, and they keep sneaking other stuff in there and making it buy more license.
Well, yeah, they, one of the options here was priority support, which we don't need, so.
Make a motion that we approve this for the three year. Three year agreement, I guess it is.
We never had one eighty flag on our post.
Uh, could you guys mute yourself, please?
Just ask them to sign off. If they're not gonna mute, sign off.
Wish I could just kick them off.
We should be able to.
Only know how to do it. Was that first?
Yeah, I, well, I just said I would. Make the motion to, to go with the three year agreement for the AutoCAD.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Uh, yeah, beyond that, we've just been facing snowplagues.
Looks like once you get the uh, old snow blower operational and get through the cleaning up spots, it's just gonna be cold.
Well, next week, I think they're calling for weather in the thirties.
This whole week, it's back to seasonal.
We haven't had any issues with fuel?
No.
Well, I don't know, it makes you. Weaning it down, cause it's supposed to be cold the next three.
W H was, they've been blending for us since Thanksgiving. And then usually when they start seeing this negative temperature, they put straight one in.
There you go.
I'll send you a picture of a bottle of uh, additive I got from John's.
We've been using some of that too.
He told me that uh, put one bottle and it's just a little bottle and I thought it'd be. It was like less than five bucks.
Okay.
But it'll take the fuel down to twenty five below.
Really?
Yeah, so I made a picture of that. Two bottles in my truck and went up there yesterday thinking, well, I'm gonna have pudding in my. And I look, I can see the bottom of the tank, it's clear as a bell, so I figured for four seventy five or five bucks. And I'm not.
It's worth it.
Knocking on John, I could probably find it at another place too, but. I'll send you the picture over there.
Yeah.
Put it neat, one bottle in each truck. No. Well, it's something they got new and, and it's supposed to help your fuel uh, mileage too, so. Cause when you start weaning it, it gets crappy fuel mileage, right, it doesn't have.
The old Osh Gosh probably got some fairly old fuel on it too. Never used that for a few years, have we?
Uh, we dig it out every year, round that, last year, around Christmas time, I feel.
You think you said that? I think it's just. Good thing to get out and it'll, it'll lose some snow.
It will, yep, she still barks.
Well, tell them good, good job this weekend, we appreciate it very much, so.
Yeah, have you got guys in town? What I'm getting at is. If Dean's got somebody out here in the country that's playing idiot and get snuck in the snowbank. When we get it in county, like to open the road for the deputy to go get them.
Do we wanna implore that?
That's the way it used to be. Years ago.
So we would save the idiots? Figure it's national selection, isn't it?
Well, last time, we, didn't we take somebody out west of town? In front of an ambulance, wasn't it? Two years ago or something, I remember.
Last year about Christmas time, um. I sent two blades out to open up an acreage. So that the guy could get home because basically the furnace had cut out on him. And the wife and kids were at home in a freezing cold house and the guy was trying to get his way back home. And he knew he'd never get down his gravel road without it. Uh, so in that instance, that guy called nine one one. Talked to dispatch, dispatch relayed the information to us. And I was able to get two guys out for that emergency, um. Yes, we've got uh. Uh, Brandon lives in town, um, Mike Waiters not far away. J R lives in Dakota City, so we've got guys around and available that could jump into a truck if need be.
I like what you stated though. Emergency.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking like life threatening emergency, I mean. If we pull trucks off at noon and we stated on the Facebook page that we're pulling trucks. I don't wanna have to go out at eight o'clock, cause some. They needed to go out for.
Two bags of groceries.
And, and a case of beer, cause they ran out, so. Yeah, I'm.
I mean, I'm just looking back behind you. Emergency ambulance services.
And, and in that instance, I, I would say that. Follow the same protocol that we've had in the past is they call law enforcement first, I mean, if it's. If it's one of those instances, I would rather send, I'd, I'd send my guy out, but it's. It's to protect these guys that are going out, it's not the person that put their own life at risk by going out.
It would be interesting if you could get our numbers statewide through all this, how many people spend time in their vehicles because of the portage agent.
I've seen plenty of pictures floating around on uh, on Facebook. From Dunkum to Webster City on Old Twenty, where cars are stacked up.
I'm sure that was a nasty road. Terrible.
I mean, we had a few, but I mean, knock on wood. We didn't have very many stranded motorists that I know.
I know uh, Tim's only, it looks like he still have three maybe, three vehicles somewhere, so.
I'd say not bad. You know, ten thousand people, he had three vehicles.
When they say travel not advised, that means travel not advised, I mean, it isn't like we didn't know about the storm coming.
Well, this, this doesn't include the, some of the jackknife on three, the state's there either on Friday. Lot, some of these vehicles been pulled out already. These are the ones that we still, supposed to have active.
Stick around for this next, next thing here.
Okay, moving down, just set an action on the proposed location for multi-use building on the county property.
All right, well, I went last week and talked with Todd, and I talked with Ben. About turning, we were looking at tearing down the old tin shed. And I looked at that shed multiple times and I thought, geez, it's a shame to tear that down the timber and it's really good, it's a good sound building, the skin's old. Uh, the doors are crap, uh, so I visited with Todd and. Ben about, we're taking the doors off the building and using it just for a lean to type. Structure, we just back stuff under, there's a lot of equipment that sits outside. The picnic tables sit outside all along, they could be stacked up inside and under a roof. And by leaving that building there, we could move this new building to the west side of the property, run it north and south. And it would fit in there. Uh, we would uh, the E M A. Course in the building would be on the south end, it could drive straight through onto the gravel lot of the. Uh, conservation department. Therefore, they wouldn't be driving through our lot. If we ever used it as a drive through. And then the secondary roads lot out back could be all locked up, the sheriff officers could. Enter it from the west side also, they won't have to get into a gate to get in there. And then secondary roads, doors would be on the east side, so they could access it from the east side inside their lot.
So it'd just be more towards the south?
Yep.
End of the.
Move it all the way down to the south end of the property, uh. With the um, setback from the street. That'll give us enough room to put it in there. And uh, then we can put a fence between the buildings. Eight foot high fence, so neighbors don't have to look at all the stuff that's sitting out there in that lot. And they go look a lot better and be a little more secure. And it's um, to me, it seems like a better proposal.
I like that, we talked about the. Repurposing the old tin structure, move the doors, make it lean to level off the. Get some fresh rock, put picnic tables, tires, whatever, that don't need to be in a fancy building. That worked, did you have agreeable?
Yeah, I uh. Met with Rick. It's like Thursday?
Yeah, my, just before the storm, yeah.
Ruffed out a, a mock drawing of it and sent it over to uh, Angelique with the city. To find out what they had for necessary setbacks. Uh, she's gonna show it to council and. Get back to me. I, I haven't heard anything.
Just looking at what we seen online, I'm sure it'll fit without a problem. And um, in that, there are several trees that would have to come down. Uh, there's, unfortunately, there's two nice pine trees, but the trees are ash trees, which are gonna die anyway. So we'd need to remove those trees. Um, Ben said his crew would grub out the stumps and haul the stumps away. Fence to take down, a lot of material that has to be moved. You know, to get the site repaired.
So at one time, we had X amount of size wise reduced it, so where are we at? Now with the proposal for the size.
The size is pretty much the same, same size we had this last time. I talked to Ben about reducing from three overhead doors to two. Because it's basically a storage building. And uh, and he, he was agreeable to that. Um, so that's some savings there, probably near twenty thousand dollars. And I do believe if we would um. Call, change our heating, I visited with the sheriff. And the E M A director, what type of temperature they need in their buildings. And I think we can put in. A lot less expensive heating system than a lot of them suggest. Um, even a conventional residential furnace in there would keep those buildings above freezing. With way less frost. And you just keep a little air moving in there, keeps the humidity down.
That was my next question, cause I know we were worried about humidity.
So, we're working on it. So I was just looking for uh. Approval of the rest of the board to proceed in this area.
Well, I think the key word is proceed, we've got this drug around about how many different towns. Everybody's agreeable with this, you talk, Rick, thanks for checking with everybody, everybody's agreeable. Makes sense, I mean, we talked a couple weeks ago about saving the old structure. I'd say make the motion to. Do what Rick stated, and that would be the, the north-south direction of the new building, maintaining and keeping the uh. Old building. And, and the main thing is let's get going on this and let's get it done this year.
We'll send quotes out for tree removal. To. Couple guys that we've used in the past.
You're not capable of cutting down trees?
That's too dangerous.
Yeah, and there's two that are close to that, okay. Get, get the tree removal guys to come down, you can dig out the stump. Okay, but I make a motion that we get moving with this.
I'll make that second.
Put both of them in the same one, the tree removal in the building?
Yep.
Yep, I'm, get rid of the trees too, get the tree removal and let the secondary roads remove the stumps.
Okay. I have a first and a second, any other discussion?
All in favor?
Once you hear from Angelique, make sure that where there's no. Tile or, or sewer or something, then we'll get that.
Yeah.
It all should come together fairly quick, hopefully.
Go up that road it did years ago.
I haven't even looked at the, the tile maps. There is a big tile, but new tile went down towards.
Yeah, went right up that road, but it was right on the. East side of the road, if I remember right.
Downstairs.
Oh, yeah.
That's a continuation of the one they wanna do near the school.
There, I get that twenty four by twenty four that I get that little heater that we got from hog slides. They keep it thirty six degrees in there and when you wanna change oil and something, turn it up to sixty and. It'll run up right up there, so, I mean, there. I got my truck plugged in, meter's spinning like it's all wood. Cost me about thirty bucks a month.
Well, there's good options.
Yeah, there, you can get a smaller heater, they're gonna be up there twenty four hours a day. So, just keep it above freezing, the, keep the sewer or the. Sewer for that.
The bathroom will be on its own area, so. All right.
I, I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I think a lot of people appreciate it, we need to get this done.
You have anything else, Ben? Ben, you got anything else? Anybody got anything for Ben? Okay. Second place on file, the sheriff ordered his report. We got a copy of it there.
It looks like there's still housing, there's more than people. It's good, it's, bring some money in. Might as well keep the, gotta jail my, keep the pool, right?
Even wondered that, uh, I think it went up to sixty dollars for that, it could affect this calendar year.
Till January first.
Well, I'm assuming nothing else was be out of whack, or he'd be telling us, so I'd make a motion to accept the sheriff's quarterly report. End of December thirty first.
All second.
All in favor?
Second place on file, the auditor's quarterly report.
Yours is another bit.
We still doing passports up there? We still doing passports up there?
This is about it. Not much. That's all there is. I'd make a motion that we accept and place on file the auditor's quarterly report that ended December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
For filing and publication, the twenty twenty-three salary report for Iowa code section three forty-nine point eighteen.
The salaries paid out for the fiscal year.
Last year, right?
Yeah, calendar year, sorry.
Okay, I make a motion for both. We'll file the publication of the salary report for year twenty-three.
One second, Pat.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Okay, down to committee report.
All right, uh, this past Tuesday the night, we had, pardon me, that was both wrong, excuse me, strike that. It's past Wednesday, the tenth. We had the public safety committee board meeting uh, that morning. And that was moved to Wednesday because of the weather. So we had that Wednesday morning, public safety.
Uh, okay, Wednesday morning I had public safety at eight. And then Thursday morning I had H C B A at the Bank Iowa at eight in the morning. And that's all I had this week.
On Wednesday, they had the mobile food pantry. Um, looks like they had a pretty good turnout. They had food for two hundred and twenty families, seventy-four, hundred and thirty-three pounds. Humble had a hundred and eleven families, two hundred and eighty-five family members, twelve veterans. Humble Homes had sixty families, sixty family members, zero veterans. Livermore area had twenty-nine families, fifty-six family members and six veterans. They had uh, thirty-six volunteers for a total of two hundred plus families. Four hundred and three family members and eighteen veterans. The next mobile food pantry is the thirteenth of March. And I think uh, they must have had it done fairly quick, cause by the time I got back to town, what did you go? By the time I got back to town, it looked like it was pretty much over, so.
About the first fifteen minutes, we was lined up and then it dead. So we started calling people that we normally come through. And uh, that's where we got rid of the biggest share of it. Yeah, I was there, one grocery cart bit me. Right off the bat, so.
That's when we go, um, I sent spring conference to you, so. No big deal, but I mean, it's just, that's the start of the spring conference. I had no, nothing official.
Okay, the only thing I had was a food pantry. Couple of fires and phone calls, but we took care of that, so.
I would like to ask that if either the radio or the, the uh, papers, um, we do have an issue with, like we talked about, if, if we do have somebody stranded, um, those guys trying to get out to them, either the snowmobile club, uh, I hate to even say the side-by-side idiots that would take off from a bar going out to rescue somebody and I'm just, when we get that at late evening hours, we can't and we can't move, all you can think of is how do I get four miles out in the country to try to get somebody that is in a ditch, so. We're looking for avenues. Um, I suggested the snow skimmer group because they have that machine that seems like it doesn't stop for anything. I mean, it's on tracks and and when you see it going down the ditches there, playing at a pretty good pace, so hopefully, um, we can get some people to respond and help us out, cause at that point we're in trouble looking for someone to go rescue somebody, so that would be my comment.
That's a good one. I would like to have one other board member that would wanna be interested in going to Danham thing. We are gonna get that settled one way or the other. I will go on it as chairman. I will be at the conservation meeting Wednesday and we're gonna get something settled. So I'd like to have one board member with me. I'll be two from supervisors, two from the river and two for the conservation. I'll get two people from there.
When is this?
Five o'clock.
You want the auto burn?
I'll see, I. You, I'm, I have double interest in it and I, they don't like talking around me when I'm live out there, so. I guess.
That's the case.
Not that I wouldn't.
We're gonna get something settled on it. This is going on long enough and it's fighting back and forth, so. Conservation don't wanna do their job, they could be removed. But we're gonna get two people from them.
Dave, that's an unfair comment. I'm just gonna, I know you're the chair, but I think that's an unfair comment and I, I think it's, yeah, it is.
If you don't do your job on a committee, you can be released. I've already checked with John. Got the ordinance number. Anything else to come for the board?
Have a report.
Is that, didn't they sell raffle tickets or something last year?
They got a uh, what is it, bag, bag tournament this weekend, like this Saturday, I believe it is, up to be up there. Profit's going to the
Well, if there's nothing else, I'd make a motion to leave during.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?